Would you not want to start late, of course? All right, we're all here, ready to go. Good evening, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of January 23rd to order, and will Commissioner Donner please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in itsness.
And then Madam Secretary, could you please call roll?
Please let the record show that all Commissioners are present this evening.
Which moves us on to approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Hold on a second, I, there we go, okay.
One vote left, is that me?
There we go.
Item passes three to two, two obviously because they weren't at the last meeting. I think that's why, at least. I hope that's why. Okay, so on to the next item on the agenda. If I could get organized here for one second. Public comments. So at this time, anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comment section on our agenda is asked to complete a request to speak form available at the door. Those completed forms should be submitted back to the Planning Commission Secretary, who is over here. Prior to the individual being heard by the Planning Commission, any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so now. In order to conduct a timely meeting, each speaker is limited to three minutes and an overall timeline of fifteen minutes for public comment. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item as it appears on the posted agenda. Do we have any public comments? Okay, thank you. No public comments tonight? Brings us to consent calendar, there are no consent calendar items, we have one public hearing, I believe? On the wrong page, my apologies. You make this so easy and I make it very complicated by going to the wrong page. So that would be item number two, public art component for the Gloria Day Lutheran Church remodel and expansion project, is their staff report. Good evening, Danny?
Good evening Chairman Nelson, fellow Planning Commissioners. So tonight's topic covers the required Arts in Public Places component of the Gloria Day Lutheran Church Expansion and Remodel Project. As you know, this project was originally presented at the November fourteenth, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission hearing. During the Commission's discussion, concerns were expressed related to the lack of public access to some of the proposed art features, as well as questions regarding the project's overall theme of the selected media. The Commission voted for one, Nelson, to table the item and have staff work on the, with the applicant to address the concerns raised and return to a future hearing. So in response to the Commissioner's concerns, staff has coordinated with the applicant and provided analysis of all applicable AIPP, Art in Public Places, requirements described in this presentation. To recap, the Gloria Day Lutheran Church is located on the south side of the intersection of Stone Hill and Ocean Hill Drive and is surrounded by residential development. The church is currently in the construction phase of a full remodel and expansion project, which will also be providing the subject public art component. Based on the requirements of the AIPP, the applicant is required to provide required public art, which cost at a minimum of thirty-three thousand dollars. The church will be investing over four hundred thousand dollars, or approximately six point two percent, of their construction contract towards public art in general. The proposed public art will consist of a series of artistic enhancements to the site, specifically integrated onto the exterior sides of the building and throughout the public outdoor areas. As shown in the site plan, there are multiple opportunities on the site for public art viewing. To fulfill the requirement, the applicant surpassed the AIPP monetary contribution with the proposed art pieces identified on the site plan, shown here, and they include two stained glass windows along Stone Hill frontage of the new sanctuary, a contemplation garden cross, an entry sculpture located at the south end of the site along the foot of the canyon, a large natural boulder fountain located at the center of the courtyard, and then finally a tall bell tower just off the center of the community courtyard, which will play various chimes depending on the occasion. Section nine point oh five point two four oh C of the Dana Point zoning code outlines five general requirements in order to fulfill the public art component of an eligible construction project. The following slides outline how the subject art pieces fulfill the general requirements of the city's Art in Public Places program. So the first general requirement outlined in section nine point oh five point two four oh C of the zoning code is the applicability requirement. Pursuant to the applicability requirement, the provisions of the AIPP shall apply to all new development within an institutional zone. Because the subject expansion and remodel is located in an institutional zoning district and is defined as new development, participation in the AIPP is mandatory. The second general requirement outlined in section nine point oh five point two four oh C of the zoning code is the general guidelines slash content and appropriateness requirement. Pursuant to this requirement, there are no mandated themes for the public art component of a project. This requirement provides four possible examples for public art, but they are listed as general guidance only and are not intended to mandate a particular style of artwork. The church has proposed art which is suggestive of the natural environment with a thematic content that is predominantly liturgical. Based upon the ecological background of the area and the use of the site as a religious facility, the proposed natural and liturgical media are appropriate for the site and will result in a unified design. The third general requirement outlined in section nine point oh five point two four oh C of the zoning code is the media requirement. Section nine point oh five point two four oh B five states that public art shall include, but not be limited to, sculpture, paintings, graphic arts, mosaics, photographs, fountains, decorative arts, film and video, and preservation of features or resources of historical, archaeological, paleontological significance located in or on a site open and accessible to the public. Public art may be either representational or non-representational, abstract. So the church has proposed to incorporate mosaics in the form of stained glass windows, sculptures in the form of contemplation garden cross, and entry wall sculptures, fountains in the form of a courtyard fountain, and non-visual elements in the form of a bell tower and chimes to benefit the visually impaired. The representational pieces include the courtyard fountain, garden cross, and bell tower. The non-representational pieces include the stained glass windows, entry wall sculptures, oh, I'm sorry, and entry wall sculptures. As stated in the previous slide, the liturgical and natural environment type media is appropriate to the immediate physical surroundings of the church and site. The fourth general requirement outlined in section nine point oh five point two four oh C of the zoning code is the location requirement. This requirement states that the public art should be prominently placed within the development project or oriented toward the pedestrian experience of the site. Particular consideration should be given to making the public art accessible to the physically handicapped. Site design should showcase the public art and provide viewing opportunities from many angles. Site landscaping and lighting design should complement and enhance the work. The approved site is designed with an entry driveway and parking lot that wraps around the perimeter of the church, offering multiple access points to the proposed public art. Additionally, all walking paths are ADA accessible and lead directly to stained glass windows, contemplation garden, courtyard fountain, and finally the bell tower. When completed, the orientation of the stained glass windows on the sanctuary will be visible along Stone Hill Drive, thus facilitating both the vehicular and pedestrian experience to the public art without entering the site. Therefore, the public art fulfills the location requirement. The fifth and very final general requirement outlined in section nine point oh five point two four oh C of the zoning code is the cost requirement. The cost requirement states that the minimum value requirement for the public art component of a development project is one-half, point five oh, percent of the total construction cost of the subject project. The provisions of this section may be satisfied by the onsite placement of public art as a component of the development project. The AIPP cost requirement for the expansion and remodel of the church is thirty-three thousand dollars. Based upon the art proposal, the church is providing public art onsite for its total cost of two thousand, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, and is therefore fulfilling the cost requirement. So based on the applicability and analysis of the previous staff report, as well as section nine point oh five point two four oh C general requirements, which is outlined in the discussion above, the proposed public art is, art component of the church expansion and remodel complies with the Art in Public Places program outlined in the zoning code. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached draft resolution approving the public art component for the Gloria Day Lutheran Church Expansion and Remodel. And that is it. Any final questions?
Thank you Danny. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? I don't think we have any yet, but stand by. Is the applicant here, does he wish to speak?
We have two, uh, questions to speak.
So I'm gonna go ahead and close the, open the public hearing, I'm sorry, and... Don Caskey, please, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. I actually only filled that out in case anyone had any questions.
Okay.
I would be here to respond to them if there was something you needed to know, or...
Are you the architect?
I am an architect.
Okay.
I'm a member of the church, and I am the building chair. So I've been involved in the project for two and a half years, right from the very beginning.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you. Karen Schnell?
Karen Schnell, and I'm a resident of Dana Point, and I'm currently the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission here in the city of Dana Point, of which I've been on for, gosh, since it started, five years. I'm also Chair of the Arts Commission at the John Wayne Airport, of where I've been for the past ten years. So, when, I think possibly maybe some misunderstanding, or, um, when the, this was presented to the Arts and Culture Commission prior to your Planning Commission meeting on November the fourteenth, and I know the Commissioners were really excited, particularly because the church, in their remodel and their redesign, took the initiative, took our basic Art in Public Places plan, and took it a step further, going out, looking to find a well-known artist that has done particular stained glasses in a lot of different places, architecturally, within a certain environment, and also including different components, structurally coming in, where there would be sculptures and things on the walls as you come in, the fountains. As it says, the, there's a broad range that are the guidelines of Art in Public Place Code, which has been in existence, incredibly so, since nineteen ninety-four here in the city of Dana Point. So, I know, I'm excited, I live right by there, so I'm gonna be really excited, coming down out of my neighborhood and being able to have the opportunity to experience it either from the street, or when I go there, for I go to several meetings or programs that the church does offer. So it's a place for our public, I think back to when, I mean, this is a different example, but I know at The Strands, when Sanford Edward, he took the initiative too, and went out and hired some artists to do the paving area, the, what's the name of the exact tiling that they did, but having the fish, having the local area kind of represented within their environment, so that all of us as the public can enjoy it. I love the part that it enhances the cultural and aesthetic environment of our city, and I think that I can honestly say Gloria Day has gone on, has gone past that with all of their requirements that they're putting together for their new facility. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that all? Okay, great. So let's bring it back, I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up to the Commissioners for discussion and comments.
I just want to say, the, the last time, one of my questions was, had the Arts and Cultural Commission viewed the site and endorsed the site? And that wasn't clear to me at the last meeting, so I'm very pleased to hear that, and so I felt that before we approve something, we should have input from the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Connor?
I, first off, I want to say I was a supporter of the, of the Gloria Day remodel, I was a big proponent of the bell tower, and I cast my vote to approve the, the project way back then. And I'm definitely not questioning the art aspect of it, I think it's, that part is wonderful, and everybody has their own definition of art, but I think the artwork is fine. What I'm questioning is whether this benefits the public or the, or the private good, which has always been one of the most difficult decisions for me as a Planning Commissioner to, to wrestle with. But when I think of what is the public, for the public benefit, you know, I'm thinking of, there's a statue, or an artwork in front of the fire station, it's ironwork, sea bass. Capital Pacific Holdings, they had a project, and rather than locating the dolphin sculpture in their neighborhood, they put it on the corner of, of, off of Dela Bispo, right across from the community center, so everybody can see it as they drive by. Marriott, in the park, in front of the Marriott, they have an ironwork underwater kelp sculpture, and it's easily accessible by a lot of people. And there's also the Mary Ellen Thomas Memorial Fountain, and that's in La Plaza. Again, you know, it's easy for people to get there. What I was hoping to see in, in the Gloria Day, to make this more of a public, accessible requirement, part of the, the code section that requires it to be public, for the public benefit, would be the, you know, if there was a monument sign right near the pedestrian sidewalk, where people could walk by and see it, or, or maybe drive by and see some kind of artwork there. The, what I'm looking at is the part of the Art in Public Places program, you know, the code is nine point zero five point two forty, and I'm looking at five B, that said that the work is an enhancement to the sites surrounding the neighborhood, which I think it is, and the city as a whole, which I think it's not. You know, I don't think that, for me, I think a lot of people are not going to go into the parking lot and then park, if they're not Lutheran, or if, you know, or they could be atheist, I suppose, and, and just park there, go into the church, or go into the park, private, you know, area. To me, once it's kind of located in the interior of the, of the lot, it's not part of the public places, you know, aspect of the code. So that's where I'm not satisfied, I'm not finding that this project meets that five B part of the code. And sadly, I mean, if we ever get to the point where we're making revisions to our, our codes, I would exempt five oh one C charitable corporations from, from this requirement, or, and I would definitely think that any of the developers for that matter might, you know, I think, you know, requiring, and I'm not sure what the percentage is of the, of the complete total package of the remodel or renovation that they're making a requirement to, to put, to fund in artwork. So I think we should look into that and say, maybe it should be a lot less, because it is kind of a burden for, for people. So that's my, my feeling, I'm, I'm not satisfied, and I wouldn't be able to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
I was, I don't want to say against, but had questions last time it came up, about it, and my, my questions, I believe, really focused around the location of the, of the art. The name Art in Public Places implies that it's in a public place, and not, you know, buried inside a multi-acre private property site. In, in looking at the staff report, hearing the presentation, talking about, uh, the public art component should be predominantly placed within the development project and oriented toward the pedestrian experience of the site, that, that seems to clarify that it can be on private property, so, so therefore my kind of objection, if you will, is moot. And I, and for the record, I think it's beautiful, the stuff that's been chosen. I would love to see some, at a minimum, some signage to, you know, it doesn't have to be large, or predominant, or overwhelming in any, but just something that invites people to say, "Public art onsite, visitors welcome," or something like that, so that, so that people know, hey, there is, we can go on there, and we can go and enjoy the art, and I think that the church would be happy to see more and more people enjoying it. I think that we should consider, some of the stuff that's been described or claimed as public art, the bell tower and the stained glass window, to me is architecture, and, I mean, you know, from one perspective, you could say the building itself is art, because it's, you know, personally, I like the design, it's beautiful and all that, but I don't know, you know, where does architecture and in art begin? I think, I'm just kind of throwing that out there for, you know, a point of discussion, maybe for a future date, but I guess I kind of have a problem saying that architecture is art, or that it gets claimed and gets credit in the AIPP program. But nonetheless, based on the clarification of the location, I'll be supportive of the project, although I'd love to see some signage.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you. Um, in reviewing the plans...
Yeah, microphone?
Oh, that. Is this okay?
Get you a headset.
In reviewing this again today, I, I clearly think that this, and I looked at, at the code, nine point oh five oh two four oh, and I looked at all the subsections, and, uh, based on what I see, there are mandatory provisions within the code, but none of those mandatory provisions say we have to be art critics. And we're not assigned to be an art critic by this particular code section. The purpose of the code is to enhance the cultural and aesthetic environment within the Dana Point City, and to encourage creating creativity, education, and appreciation for arts and our heritage. And I think the, the plan that has been developed by the church is very good, and answers all of those different issues, answers to all of those different issues. There are some Dana Point codes, we all know that they demand absolute application, because it has to do with city welfare, or city health, or safety, those are very narrow. This code is a very broad one, and, and I think that, that goes in the favor of the church. I don't, I don't see anything in the code itself that is an impediment to this project. Again, we are not art critics, we're not here to say that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it certainly seems to, to tick all the boxes, and in a very creative, beautiful way. The art program itself, and the art committee, are the first arbiters of this, and they've done their work, and they've looked at this, and, and I think we have to take that into consideration in terms of how we view it. Art is fluid, in the eye of the beholder, we know that, we, and you can't say this is right, or this is wrong, you could if there were certain objectionable points about it, but there's nothing like that in this project. I think that... I think I've probably said enough. I'm in favor of the project.
Okay, thank you. Karen, thank you very much for coming out and speaking on behalf of the, I don't know if you're speaking on behalf of the Commission, but you certainly gave us some insight, and that's, was helpful. I, you know, I started off, when I initially saw this proposal, and I had a knee-jerk reaction, I wasn't supportive of it, I questioned the very notion of public art being located within the project, and I've since, and prior to the last hearing, come to another conclusion. I agree, A, that this project meets all of those requirements, the Art in Public Places, I believe it actually exceeds those requirements by a fair amount. I think the church has definitely chosen the more difficult path, I think a lot of people just say, "We'll give you the money, and let, let the Art Commission deal with it," and so I applaud them for taking a pretty significant amount of money and doing some really great things with, with, not only their art, but with their building and with their site. Public art is clearly, is clearly defined and does not limit, is not limited to any specific genre or specific item. I think the language even goes, is broad enough, because it suggests that it's not limited to the things that are mentioned within that code. And so, to Commissioner Murphy's point, we're not critics, I mean, I'm certainly a critic, but it's not my job to be a critic up here, when, when it comes to art, and the intertwining of religion and art is always, can get a little bit tricky, but I think it's important to note that, you know, there's, if you could think of the Sistine Chapel, for, for instance, as a piece of really well-done art within a religious building. The organ itself is, is, it's not only created by artists, but it's played by artists, so that obviously meets our standards. That, the stained glass, you know, I don't know anybody that does stained glass, I know it's a, it's an art form, and I don't think that just any architectural feature on a building should be considered art, but in this case, stained glass is an art, and I think it's a very creative use of stained glass, and I love it. I, I drive by there almost every day to work, and I'm looking forward to seeing that when it gets put up. As it relates to location, I, you know, I spent some time going back through the code again, and the way I read it, is it talks specifically about the pedestrian experience within the site, not adjacent to the site, not as you drive by the site, and I think if we start to force artwork out on the street, because that's essentially where the pedestrian experience is, we're gonna have a lot of drive-by art pieces, and I... And I frankly can't look at the road, look at my phone, look at the art. And I obviously am not looking at my phone, but roadside art is not something that really does much, in my opinion. I think it's, I'll go back to what I said earlier, the way that this has been designed and the way that the elements of the art has been implemented throughout this entire site is engaging to everybody, whether you're right at the front parking lot, you're all the way at the back near the garden area. So I'm in full support of it. I was in full support of it last time, which is why I voted no for a continuance. And I would actually move at this point from, that we approve this, that we approve this project?
Approved staff recommendation?
Yes, and that would be for the public art component for the Gloria Day Lutheran Church remodel and expansion project. I don't think there's a staff or the LCPA number or anything on here, right? So that's a motion to approve.
I just had a question, and not to put you on the spot or anything...
Sure.
But if you could explain to me how you think this art benefits the city as a whole?
I could think of several ways that this art benefits the city. That is open to the public. Just because it's a church doesn't leave it, does not make it, I mean, the fact that somebody doesn't want to drive onsite to look at that, that's a choice that they have to make. It's not behind a gate. It's fully accessible to all residents. I mean, that in itself is a benefit to the city.
All right.
Do we just proceed early? Do we have a second?
Yeah, do we have a motion? We have no second.
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second by Commissioner Donner, and if we want, we can have a discussion, or we can just move for a vote.
I have a question. What about any kind of welcoming signage to invite people to go on to the, you know, to go in and view and enjoy the art? Was there any support for that?
I have a comment on that. I think that the Church has got many community organizations that are there frequently. So, you know, I don't know that a separate sign is gonna be required, because you're gonna have tremendous access from the Boy Scouts, the other groups that meet there. And I do agree with Commissioner O'Connor with the issue of requiring organizations, 501(c)(3)'s, that would be required to contribute, but I think this is, it does enhance the cultural and aesthetic environment of the city. I don't think there's any question about that. And I think we can parse the details of how much of the public, but the bells certainly are for the public, and the quality of the art is beyond, beyond, above our expectation. So I think the issue is access, and I think with all the organizations that do access this site, that that requirement would be met.
Can I just add too? I absolutely agree with the Commissioner. Looking at this list, which I looked at before our last meeting on this subject, there are many wonderful organizations here, and I can't believe with a church of the magnitude it's going to be and has been, that it won't draw more individuals. I don't think there's an issue about having to put up a sign saying this is, you know, this is here for the community. I think that's pretty obvious. As we drive through Dana Point, some of us go and look at some types of art, some of us look at other types of art. We, five of us could look at a sculpture or picture right now, and none of us agree on, you know, how much we liked it or didn't like it, or how much, in our opinion, it was good or bad. I remain of the opinion that I don't see any obstacles to this.
Thank you. So, I don't know, you know, we're, public hearing has been closed, so, I mean, unless my fellow commissioners are okay with opening it back up for comment from the Arts Commission, we can just move this to a vote, or, we're just gonna...
I recommend we vote.
Okay. So there's a motion, a second, let's call for the vote. And that item passes four to one. Congratulations, thank you for coming out. And that moves us on to the next item on our agenda, which is old business. There is no old business. New business, there does not appear to be any new business. Do we have any staff reports?
I do not. Matt or Jen?
I don't have anything.
Okay. One quick comment as we go to Commissioner comments. I'll just go first, because I started. It's restaurant week, is it next week or this week? This week is restaurant week, so there's a lot of great restaurants in the Lantern District and throughout the city. I would recommend that everybody here go and enjoy.
Thank you. That should have been a staff report. Do we have a website we can refer folks to?
Dana Point Chamber website has a list of the people who are debating that.
Perfect. And I believe there's a reporter in the audience who has captured all this. All right. Commissioner Donner?
I guess we have a grand ribbon-cutting ceremony coming up for the South Cove development behind the Denny's coming up on Thursday.
Correct. See, I don't need to do any staff reports, because you all are so good, you do them for me. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Connor?
I have no comments, except I hope everybody stays dry in these storms, and hopefully we'll have a few more days of sunshine, so...
Thank you. Vice Chair?
I just want to commend the commissioners that were here at the last meeting for the speedy, possibly record-breaking, quick commission that they held, and I'm thinking that maybe I'm the cause of longer meetings if I wasn't there and it went so fast.
Well, I have a quick question to staff. What are we supposed to wear on Thursday? Are we supposed to wear board shorts or what?
Good question. We'll send out an email.
All right. Sounds like we've got that. I don't think there's anything else, so I'm gonna move to close adjournment till the next regular Planning Commission meeting that will be held on Monday, February 13th at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter, in the City Council Chambers located at 332-82 Golden Lantern Suite 210, Dana Point, California.